Coming up next on Get Caught in a Net. You are now tuned in to Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. Where your host, Annette Harris, analyze intriguing life questions and concerns such as, do Christians suffer from mental illness? Have you wondered why they act abnormal? Or you may ask, what is really going on in their minds? Do you need an app? Well, keep listening for a biblical understanding of the psychology of the mind.
Great afternoon, guys. Welcome. Come on in. You are joined in with Annette Harris. I am the host of Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. I am the CEO of Get Caught in a Net Incorporated, also your certified mental health ambassador and two-time award-winning author of that bestseller Surviving a Silent Heartbeat. You guys, you're always, I always tell you when you see my face at 12 noon Central Standard Time on a Wednesday, it's time for you to come on in and get caught in a net. Listen, I'm excited because we are continuing on featuring distinguished Authors Guild nominees for 2025. We started last week and we had a wonderful group of authors to come in. On last week, we had Rachel Gary, Rashawn Carter, Val, I'm sorry, we didn't have Valerie last week, but we also had Bobby Struchan. And if many of you remember, Valerie and Bobby unfortunately had death in the family. So it was a little challenging for them to try and get on, but we are yet praying for them, praying for their families as well. And then of course, last Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM, we had Paula Carl, Teresa Smith Hickman was on, Jay Vincent, Andre Ware on last week. And so we have different ones in different slots. And today, we're going to feature a whole different group at 12 noon and at 6:00 PM on today. I am going to first off pray, Lord, we thank you for all things. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for blessing us and giving us strength, giving us wisdom, what to do and what to say and how to live in this life. And we pray your great blessings over each and every one of our guests that we have on today, whatever their personal needs are, give them strength and bless this segment. And we thank you in advance, in Jesus' name. Hosea, the fourth chapter, six words, I'm sorry, six and four, moving a little fast here. My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge because thou hast rejected knowledge, I will also reject thee. And again, we're grateful to be here on this afternoon, grateful to have another segment, grateful to talk with some more nominees. This is a wonderful time, you know, during this season. This is a great season here. So I'm going to bring them on one by one and we're gonna just jump into our conversation on today. As I'm doing that, I'm going to encourage each of you to make sure that you tag individuals directly into this live feed. Please make sure you share it. Throw up the hearts, the care button, the thumbs up, if you would not mind, what you're doing when you are pushing this, this live stream out so that individuals will be able to either watch it live or they can come back later and watch the recorded segment. And so you see in my midst, I have three queens here with me on today. They are authors, great authors in their own right, and we're going to introduce them to you so that we can talk about their projects. First off, we have author Black Diamond. How are you on this afternoon?
I'm fine. Thank you so much for having me.
You're so welcome. You're so welcome. And then we have author Cassandra Hester. How are you?
I am good. Thank you for having me on the show.
You're welcome. So welcome. And then we also have, and please have, I'd like to ask individuals names, make sure I'm pronouncing it correctly. Is it Chantavia?
Absolutely. I am Chantavia Gill. Thank you all so much for having me today and congratulations to the other nominee.
Yes, definitely. All right, we're gonna jump right in on today, you guys. You can find us on Instagram, YouTube, Facebook, on my page, Get Caught in a Net. So you shouldn't miss us on today and we want to make sure that we have this segment out so individuals can engage. So if you have any questions or comments from my guest on today, do not hesitate to throw it into the comment section. We will kind of toggle back and forth during this interview to see what you have to say to us on today. So let's, let's, let's start off. I want to see, I've asked you guys how you're doing on today, but if you would not mind, taking just a couple of minutes just to introduce who you are. Who is author Diamond? Who is author Gill? Who is author Hester? In your own words. Whoever wants to start.
I'll start. So my name is Chantavia Gill. I am a bachelor nurse. I've been in the medical field for over 16 years and I was, you know, I have experience in long-term memory care, IMCU, ICU, ER, medical surgical. But I just recently in the past three years, in the last three years migrated into holistic medicines where I am a certified herbalist. I grow my own foods and make my own medicines. I'm currently in school for my tri-doctor degree for naturopathic, spiritual and fundamental medicine. And I am the author of 16 Secrets to Self-Actualization, a book where it teaches you how to treat yourself holistically from many disease processes and how to grow your own food.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. I see who I need to connect with after this show. My goodness. And you said you've been, you've been in 16 years, you said?
16 years I've been in the medical field. Yes, ma'am.
You don't look older than 16.
Yeah, you know, I started out as a certified nursing assistant and then a licensed practical nurse and then my associate's my bachelor's degree and now my doctorate degree. So I started out as a certified nursing assistant for two and a half years.
Wow. That's a blessing. That's a blessing. Well, thank you. Thank you for starting us off and giving us that information, wealth of information already. Author Black Diamond.
Yes.
Come on, talk to us. Introduce yourself.
Okay, I am originally from New York. I make sure I put that out there because everywhere I go, people say, well, I hear the language, I hear the accent. I don't hear it, but it's, if it's there, then it's gonna stay because I'm gonna represent New York all the way. I am, I have been parenting 14 children. The youngest is two, the oldest one is 49. And as a matter of fact, I'm gonna take that back. I am parenting 15 children. The other one, no disrespect, that's my mom. She is 100 years old, so I'm still caring for her. And I'm just loving, just loving every moment that I can say my mother is 100 years old. I have been in the social work field, working with children and families for over 40 years. I am gonna be retired at the end of this month. And I don't know, it's bittersweet to say that I'm retiring from something that I love that's been a part of my life, but I'm still gonna be advocating. I am also a trauma-informed parent coach. And I'm a drug, I just became drug-endangered children certified, child certified. I work with mental health. I am gonna be, I am the CEO on a Roku channel called Access Granted, so that's gonna be coming out soon. I published several children's books, which I've won several awards for. I've won a lifetime achievement awards and a Langston Hughes Award. And this current book that I've written, my daughter just started reading it and she says, Ma, I can't believe that you wrote The Habitual Liar. And there's no mistake in the words, the way that it's spelt, it's spelt exactly the way that I would like it to be spelled. Then we did a spinoff with it and that's followed by Cracks in the Surface, Strengths in the Core. What we did with that book, we created a panel and many of the panelists are some of the authors on DAG and they, I can't say as much as I would love to say about them, it'll take me a whole show to say what I need. They sat on the panel, they all got the book and they did the work. They did the work. And when I say they did the work, they bought it and we, we just had a time with it, with people who calling in, listeners, and people who did not touch into their own self with mental illness. And to tell you the truth, I did the work. I did the work in that book. And as I told them prior to doing the book, that I've learned to parent myself. And I'm hoping that several that read this book will also do that. We also had someone who was a very special consultant and that's Dr. Carolyn Stevens, who's been there throughout that journey with us and some projects that I'm working on with her. So I'm just, just so proud and just so happy to be in this spot that I'm in now.
Beautiful, beautiful. My goodness. I know you guys heard me at the beginning, I said, I'm here with three queens and they are showing so far telling you why that label is definitely true. You know, I know some people don't like labels, but you guys are queens. That's, that's how I see it. Author Cassandra Hester, come on, talk to us. Who are you?
Ooh, how do I follow that? Both of those introductions, but I'm just a small little midwestern girl from the great state of Iowa. First time author, so I am the mother of two boys, you know, one 30 and one is 17, finishing his high school final year, so I'll be an empty nester here after this year. I just again, grew up in Iowa Midwest to a very strict mother who was a minister, which was the, the, I guess you wanna say topic of this book that I wrote about because it is based on her memoir and grew up in a very strict religious Pentecostal background and most of you know what Pentecostal is. I did run track and yes, I wore skirts every single day, so I ran track in a skirt hurdles to say, which benefited me, a full ride track scholarship. And all my success on the track, you know, continued in my next stage where I work for Duke University now as a senior director in finance. So this is, has been a journey for me writing this book and I enjoy the ride and I'm looking forward to a book number two because I keep getting a lot of feedback from everyone saying, hey, we wanna hear more. So I think there's more in me.
Okay, yeah, there is. Well, they always say there is a, there is a book in every one of us, you know, whether we choose to tell it, you know, but there is a book. That's wonderful. Now, I do wanna back up and I wanna ask everyone to, to keep our friend here, author Black Diamond, in your prayers. I'm grateful that she's able to join us on today because she experienced a loss in her family, but we are definitely holding you up before the Lord, you and your family. So thank you for even being here on today. I do see you guys coming in and I would appreciate again, making sure you guys share this live feed. You can tag individuals directly into it if you are able to on today. So let, let me do this. Let me ask a question because you guys obviously have these wonderful projects, books that you have written. Some of you have written more than one, but, and in looking at the ones that were nominated, that's kind of what we wanna focus on today. I mean, I love to hear the history, you know, if you've written more than one book. So thank you in advance for sharing that information. But let me ask you the question. Do you think that your life has been influenced by your experiences or vice versa? Do you think that your life has been influenced by your experiences or your experiences by your life?
I can answer that. I absolutely feel like my life influenced this book. And to be honest with you, the journey in which God had me, I had no idea he was gonna lead me to where I am today. I never had any intentions on writing the book. I never even had intention of doing a lot of things that I'm doing now, what God has me doing. But for me, my son was diagnosed with autism and he was on a lower spectrum of the autistic scale. And the doctors, they wanted to, they encouraged me to put him on medication. Me being in the healthcare field, that was just not an option for me. And so one day God told me to start gardening. I'm thinking to myself, what does gardening have to do with helping my son, you know? And when I started gardening and I started to study the medicinal uses and benefits of certain herbs, fruits and vegetables, I then learned that, I then started to study more about autism, the causes, some of the links of autism, which are our foods, which is the radiation, which is the vaccines, a lot of those things are the causes of autism in children. And so I learned about the metal and the mercury on the brain and how to extrange that off of autistic children, off their brains to allow that gray and white matter to, you know, in their neurovascular system to properly function. And so I've incorporated that new lifestyle, incorporate those changes and those dietary changes into my son. And now he's no longer on IEP, he's no longer considered an autistic child, he's speaking, he's reading, he's writing, he's doing musical instruments. So that then encouraged me to want to learn more about different herbs. What about hypertension? What about diabetes? What about cancer? What about all these other disease processes that we're told are not curable? But when you do a lot of dig and do more research, you realize that God gave us everything on this earth needed for us to survive. And it's, it's up to us to know how to therapeutically use it. So for me, just taking my years of experience in the medical field and taking my new experience as an herbalist, I was able to combine them both into this book, 16 Secrets to Self-Actualization. God told me to write the book. So in this book, you'll have your, well, I'm speaking about the body system as a whole. First, I'm telling you about the purpose of the body systems and the proper functions of that body system. And then I go into improper functions of the body symptoms, systems, signs and symptoms and some of the risk factors. And then I educate you on the lifestyle changes that I would recommend you take in order to combat a lot of those disease processes that we're told cannot be healed. I then go as far as adding different herbs that I would recommend for certain disease processes. And then in the back of the chapters, you will have tinctures and teas on how to, you know, how to properly prepare the herbs for your liking. So yes, this book definitely has something to do with, you know, my lifestyle absolutely inspired this book and then it catapulted me into newer heights where I have my own podcast, Hi, Low with Shay, that has now been picked up on a nationally syndicated radio show, 102.3 Rejoice Gospel. So God has carried me so much with just this one thing and I just, I'm thankful that I was obedient. And I think, I'm thankful that I did not allow my son's diagnosis to make me feel like, you know, somewhere we failed or make him feel like he was inadequate. I'm thankful that I had the mindset of looking at it as a gift. I'm glad that I had the perception and the mindset of, okay, how can we combat this instead of me feeling like I was doomed with it? So just God blessing me with my son ultimately blessed me with everything that I am today.
Ooh wee, I love it. Absolutely love it. And you, you gave us so much in that, you know? Can I ask you now, what age was your son?
He was diagnosed at three years young. So initially, you know, and this is for anyone, you know that children starts to have speech, start speaking around six months, even if it's just one words. So I encourage anyone, don't do, don't make the mistake I did. I just thought that maybe he needed a little bit more time. I thought that, you know, he's developing at his own speed, he'll pick up. And so, but I encourage any mom, father or caregiver, if the child, if your child isn't verbally trying to say anything, even if it's just Babel word like, blah, blah, if they're not trying to say something at six months or at least one year, go and get them assessed. It is nothing wrong with getting them assessed. And so for me, I just thought that, you know, he'll, he'll come around, he'll, he'll pick it up. And then around about a year and a half, two, he was just saying one word sentences. So he was finally diagnosed at the age of three and they wanted to put him on medication. He is now eight years young. He's been speaking since he was six. However, he was speaking just two or three words sentences at six years young. Now he's able to communicate, he's able to express himself, he's able to perform for sentences, he's able to sing and do so much more. I'm so grateful and thankful that God chose me to be his mother.
That is beautiful. Absolutely beautiful. And I heard you say you're, you have a podcast and it's going nationally syndicated. So yeah, this is gonna help so many people because I'm, I'm sure in those of you that are on here can probably attest to, I've seen more and more cases, you know, in children being diagnosed and everything, but I'm grateful that there are individuals such as yourself, such as Holly Robinson Peet, you know, different ones, you know, in entertainment that are really, really pushing to make sure that their, their children are not slighted and all of that and they get the testing and all that. So my hat is off to you. Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. And I'm, I was trying to, as you were talking, I was trying to tag as many parents and individuals in. I want them to be able to hear this and this is absolutely beautiful. So let's, let's hop on off the Cassandra, can you talk to us? Can you relate to that question about your life being influenced by your experiences or your experiences influencing your life?
Well, I think from my standpoint, my life has definitely been experienced by my, or influenced by my experiences. My book, which again, which is based on my mother's life, she was a very great faithful woman to God. And in spite of everything that she endured, which is my platform right now, is dealing with abuse, whether it's physical, mental and emotional abuse in the church, but you sit silent. It's not a topic that churches address. And there's many folks that are sitting in the church very silent about this and you never know what they're going through. So when I say my life has been influenced by my experiences, it is true that you are a product of your environment. But the good thing about me is I was one to say I was not going to be in that type of situation from how, what I saw, what I experienced growing up. But I mean, unbeknownst to me, there were times where I would get caught in certain things and didn't even realize it, you know? Even though I said, no, you're not gonna be a part of this, you're not going to experience that. I would never do or go through what my mother experienced and so forth. But you sometimes, life is life and then you take, get caught up in things and next thing you know, you're just like, man, I always said I never would, but then you're there. And but you recognize that and then have to backtrack and figure out, you know what? I remember all the things that I was taught, you know, by her. And I remember when you, the Bible says, train up a child in the way they should go and they won't depart thee. And that was always in the back of my mind, you know, no matter what I was experiencing. Many times that I tried to leave and do my own things, like, okay, Lord, I'm not ready for this yet. But you know what? Things just never, I never seemed to fit in, in any particular environment where I wanted to do it my way. God always had his, his hand on me and said, no, I got a plan for you. And that's not the plan that I have for you. And in writing this book, you know, this book was like a 10-year journey because I knew, I had a thought and there was always something inside me to say is you need to tell the story. You need to tell the story. You're gonna touch a lot of lies by telling her story. I was just like, uh, no, I'm not a writer. I don't even know where to start, you know? No. And I just, years went by and every now and then that feeling just kept coming in. It was God's keeping me and it's like, you know what? There's still this plan, this project I need to do. And it wasn't until a couple of years ago, when I went to Sarah Jakes Roberts Woman Evolve Conference and on the last night, she got up and preached and said, God said that it's time for those of you who have delayed doing what he asked of you, now is the time, he was gonna birth those things out of you. And then she went down the line and she said, yeah, that person that's delayed writing that book, God says time is now. And I was like, oh, Lord, I'm just not getting away. So I said, okay, Lord, if this is meant for me to do, then you're going to open the door and pave the way for me to get this done. And I remember Sarah Jakes said, exactly one year from today, it's those of you are gonna birth whatever it is that God had me. And it was exactly one year from that night that I finished my book. And I knew then that this is what God wanted me to do and to go forward. And it's been an experience and everything that I've learned from my mother, you know, and even saw what she went through. You know, when you're younger, even though I grew up in church, you just think, oh, okay, that's just mom and that's just, you know, because we're a holiness church, you know, you see some miracles happen and so forth, but you don't really relate to it because you're just young. But now that I've grown up and had my own experiences with Christ, I understand now, wow, that was powerful, what God did for her and I didn't recognize it then. You know, I'm, because I'm seeing my own blessings and miracles happen in my life. So now I'm relating to exactly what I saw that she experienced years, I mean, over 30 years ago. So I want to make sure that my experiences that I saw then will be reached to the multitudes to understand that God is the same yesterday, today and forever. That isn't changed and that's what I wanna make sure everybody understands.
Beautiful. How did you come up with that title?
Well, that's a good question. I was going back and forth for a while and trying to figure out, you know, what am I gonna call this book? You know, how can I sum it all up with everything that she's gone through? And I just wrote down quite a few things and then I said, Lord, you know what? You gotta give it to me because I wanna make sure I hit it right. And early in the morning, one morning, it, you know, I just woke up and I'm just like, yeah, well, I trust him. And I was like, that sums her life up, no matter what. Everything she went through, she never wavered in her faith and she continued to trust God. And I said, that's it. You know, I, I mean, there's not much more I can say about that. You know, the book says it all and that title says it all. And that's how I came up to, because I asked God, I said, I need you to give me exactly what I should call this book.
Yeah, beautiful. All right. It's always good to go to the Lord, right? He would definitely help us. Come on, author Black, talk to us a little bit about life experiences, which one influenced which or was it both?
I think it was a combination of both and I'm still going through the life experience. I started out not wanting to be an author, not wanting to be in the social work field. I wanted to go to Howard University to become an international judge and that's just where I wanted to be. And I say to my children and I say, I love you all, but I didn't wanna be a parent. And you see how many children I have now? I didn't want to, but he planted them in, in, in my heart and in my, in my, on my journey. And I said, I'm not gonna change the course of this because this is the course that you wanted me to follow. But early on with my first book, I only wrote that book because a hit was put out on My Children and I. And I felt as though, let me write this book because if I don't survive, nobody's gonna be able to tell my children or grandchildren about me, except me, and I want them to get it right. So I wrote that book. And when it came back and it was published, I said, okay, the book was published, that's great. I'll make sure I have a copy for each one of my children and they can make copies for their children. And I didn't realize that it would have an impact on some, a negative one on some who believed that they were the, the individuals I was speaking of in the book. I said, what they have to understand is that this book is titled, In My Mother's House. And that was because of the things that was happening to me in my mother's house. And if you just happened to be there, then you just happened to be there. If you wanted to take any course of action, I think that you need to advise legal first before you do. Because some of the things that happened can cause you more of a problem than it would if you were thinking about gaining anything from me. So that settled down and I moved on. I wouldn't say that it was a writing bug. It was another life happened where my nephew, who I adopted, who's the one that just passed away, he's my son. He asked me, why did I want to adopt him? And I asked him, I said, didn't the, the social worker tell you why you were in care? He said, no. So I explained to him his journey of why he was in care and I asked him, was he okay? He said he was okay, but I said to myself, I wouldn't even be okay. I'm not, I still wasn't okay and to this day, I'm not okay with what I had to tell him. And I had to tell him his story, his truth. And I happened to look and I saw that he had a younger sister who I also adopted, was sitting on the other side of him. And I said, my God, she's gonna wanna ask the question too and I wanna be prepared. So I started writing down her journey, which turned out to be the series of children's books, Stacy F. It was Stacy F, My Forever Mommy, Stacy F, A Temporary Home for Stacy. And then it became the coloring book, the Stacy F coloring book. So we just went on with that. And I wanted individuals to understand the journey of foster care and adoption because many people wanna be foster parents, but they don't understand the journey. Then you have some people who come into the field of social work and they say, I wanna help, I wanna do this, I wanna do that. And that's great, I applaud it all on both sides. But I wanted to explain it in, in lay But I, I wanted to explain it in, in layman's terms so they can get an idea. It's not a full story as far as what social work is about, but it's just touching on it. And if you have, if you adopted or have a foster child in your home, at any point in time, that child may have come into your home for different reasons. So the book is generic, so you can pick any one of the books and decide to choose to read it to them. But I also say that social workers should be able to pick up that book and use it as a tool when they, when they have to unfortunately remove the child from the home. They can use that book as a tool. So I, I made it in that way for them. Other books that I have written, it's always something that causes me to write a book. 1380 Prospect Avenue, Not Another Bronx Tale, because it's not just another Bronx Tale. It's because my, my siblings and my cousins grew up in the house, 1380 Prospect Avenue. And they told me all these stories about them. And I was jealous, I'm gonna be honest. I was jealous because I didn't grow up there. They would, they would tell me stories and I would sit back and say, man, I really wish that I grew up in the house. So what I did was I took the name of the address and all the places they've been to. And some of the places are still there, names of streets, that address is still there. And I made that book my own. I made it my story, but what I did was I used what I knew and I knew social work. So I decided to talk about teenagers because teenagers are hard to place when they're in the care of any state. So I talked about what teenagers go through while they're in care. And it's not what people think. It's not just about being hard to place. It's about some things that they're asked to do, which they wouldn't wanna do. But now that they feel as though they are not gonna be adopted, I have no other choice but to live this type of life. So they're introduced to things that they should not be introduced to. And it also shows how so many different systems have failed these children. We made a trailer of the book and we started to do a full fledged movie of it, but COVID hit. So we had to stop. And I didn't wanna put any of these, by these children who were involved in the creation of this book and of the trailer in jeopardy. So we stopped and we just did not do it. So I, I moved on. And like I said, it's just life that happens to me. This book that I've written, The Habitual Liar, I'm surprised I wrote it. I am so surprised that I wrote the book. And the thing about me with books, any book that I write, I never read them. I write them because I've already experienced the life, so I won't bother to, I don't wanna go back through it again. But The Habitual Liar, it took me five years to write that book because I needed therapy. When I say I needed therapy, I needed therapy because I could have lost myself writing that book. I would have been so much of that character that it wouldn't have been good for me and it wouldn't have been good for my children. But I did put myself in some of the situations of this character because I wanted the readers, when they read it, they'll get genuineness from this book, that these things do happen. But I had to experience some of the things in order for me to be able to deliver it to them. And, you know, just saying the word, the habitual liar, is not what people think. Some people say, oh, I know somebody who's definitely habitual liar.
Right.
We all may know somebody that who actually may be that. But in this book, you, this is a book that you cannot judge it by its cover. When you get into the first half of it, you'll say, oh, which is why I was kind of embarrassed to enter it into DAG because I said, I don't think this is the type of book that they would like in DAG. But Farin Mclemore is the one that encouraged me to enter the book. I don't think she read the book. So I said, I don't think she knows what's in this book. So I said, I'll, I'll gamble, I'll take a chance. But when you get to the end of the book, it, it, it tells another tale to where we're looking at making a movie of it. We're already looking at book three. People ask, what happened to book two? And I explained to them that book two is not a book. It's called Thing Two. And I'm excited about the thing. And just to just say the thing, I'm just, I just smile because I'm just so happy and so proud of what it's gonna be. And I can't wait for me to pull it all together and for people and individuals to see it. Because again, it comes totally out of my character and for me to have come up with Thing Two. It, like, I'm sitting here now and I'm hearing the stories of the young ladies in their books. And I'm sitting in my car, excuse me, anybody that's watching, it's just, I just happen to be caught up in my car right now and I didn't wanna miss this interview. And things that's happening around me, I'm already rolling with ideas for books. It just comes to me. I don't set out to write a book because of something. It's gotta be something that's related to me in some form or fashion where it's either something I experienced or something that I've seen and I pulled it together to make it a story. But I, I usually do research on each and every one of my stories because I wanna make sure that they're genuine. Make sure that I know what I'm talking about. Make sure that I experienced it. People are asking me, am I gonna write book two to In My Mother's House? I, I could write book two. Within that book, I'll give you a little bit of it. It, I would have to speak about my husband in that book. And it's gonna be a little difficult to speak about him because my husband was dead for three weeks before anybody told me, before we found his body. When he was discovered at the medical examiner's office, he had identification on him. He had my identification on him. They knew where he was, who he was. They knew that, the hospital knew that. But you failed to call me. It's going on 20 years and I still don't know what happened to him. And it's rolling right into my son. He passed away two weeks ago. And now I have to have a detective and homicide involved to find out what happened to my son. Some, I don't wanna go another 20 years without me knowing. It's hard enough still trying to figure out what happened to my husband. So now here I am. I'm not gonna write a, a book about what happened with my son. So that's not gonna be a part of the life experience. But things that's surrounding him and that occurred, I guarantee you will be a part of a book, but it's not based on him. It's what's going on to where I think, again, systems are failing and systems are not paying attention. And what, what I say is that systems are more so concerned about power than the people. And that bothers me. So that's why I'm on a different quest now and I'm dealing with a lot of mental health that other individuals are going through, but they're not recognizing it because they figure that is taboo. It is not taboo. Mental health is real and it needs to be addressed. So this is why we pulled that panel together to address it. And I'm working on some different levels of mental health. And that's gonna be with Dr. Carolyn Stevens. We're working on some projects and I'm also working on other things. So I'm, I'm, you may say that I'm all over the place. But me being all over the place is because I'm dealing with each and every one of those pockets and they have to be addressed. And I'm having a, I'm having an issue with people not paying attention and not being focused because we need to take care of what's in our own home before we tell other people. And I'm gonna say it, to keep our name out of your mouth, deal with what's going on in your home.
Yes.
Before you start worrying about what's going on at a higher level. Those people that are at that level were put in that place to deal with that level. You were put in your place to deal with this level. So stay in your place and stay in your lane. And let's deal with this first because there's so much happening in the state that I'm in that I believe that people are more so worried about the power, not actually the people. You're worried about what you look like and the salary of that person and how you're gonna feel. But what about the people that you're supposed to be servicing? You're not servicing the right way. There's, I, you know, I have my own podcast, which is called Basic Black After Dark. And that's a subsidiary of The Crew Podcast, which I'm very proud of. And I told, I said, next year, I'm gonna make a turn with what I have on my show. People may not like it, but it's just gonna be too bad because it's the raw truth and I'm gonna bring that out. And I think it needs to be said. And a lot of it had occurred with me and it happened with me. I'm trying to save my name and clear my name on a lot of things that has happened. I don't think it was fair of, of what has gone on. I'm grateful that I am at this point in my life to where in about a month, I'm free enough to say what I need to say and nobody can put a gag order on me to say what I feel like I need to say. So I, I will be speaking for so many people that I believe are in the same situation that I'm in. Is but because they haven't worked in certain areas that I have worked in, they don't have the same knowledge that I have, that I can give. So I've spoken to certain communities and certain professionals and fields and let them know, I can speak now. I can speak freely. So I can help you with your clients. I will advocate for them. I had to advocate for myself. Had I not known what I know now, I would probably, I'm gonna be honest, I would be open about it. I would probably be sitting in jail because that's what they were trying to do, where they were trying to make an arrest. But it did not work.
Right.
Because I saw all the holes, the judge saw all the holes and, and, and everything, and the truth was coming out. There's still more that I'm still dealing with at this point in time right now. And the truth need to come out. And I'm really sick and tired of things. And I said, right now, I don't really care which way it goes. I have nothing to lose anymore. You, the case to arrest me is gone. What are you gonna do? Take my name from me? You can have that name if you want to, if it means that much to you, to wanna take it and destroy it. People who know me, know my actions, I'm 60 years old. What are you gonna try to do to me? There's nothing more that you can do to me and I'm not gonna allow you to do this to me. Now that I know that I'm free on a different aspect, I'm gonna be able to fight. But what I do say is that you poked the bear, you woke up the bear. Now there's gonna be a problem.
Right, right.
So and you caused it yourself. So since you wanna say, oh, I shouldn't say this, I shouldn't say that, then you should have did your job.
Yeah.
And you should have investigated the right way because I've seen a lot of i's and d's that had not been crossed. And I know what, I know what I'm talking about. I would not have taken in all these children for you to make these accusations about me. And then you clear me up and then you say something else, but you partially clear me. I'm still dealing with issues. And that's okay because I know God's gonna see it. He's gonna tap you on the shoulder and say, you know, you should know better than that.
Right, right.
I chose her to do this job and you're interfering with my work.
Yeah.
And that's okay. So I've already taken a step back. Yes, I was angry. Yes, I had looked in the mirror and I said, that's not even me anymore. And I wanna get back to me. I wanna get back to happy, you know, as happy as I know it. When people say normal, I, I've been doing this for over 20 some years. And I wanna know what normal is because normal hasn't been a part of my life for over 20 years. So it's gonna be hard and it's gonna take a little while longer. I don't want people to look at me and say, she's mean, she's always keeping this mean face on. No, I'm tired. I'm tired because I'm fighting so many systems that's fighting me. And I'm doing it by myself. And I said, that's okay, because I was born in this world by myself, but he brought me in here with power. And I've always learned that power is not something that is given to you, power is something that you take. And I'm taking it all and I'm taking on all callers at the same time. So I'm not speaking with anger, I'm just letting them know, I'm putting you on notice. I am here. You need to be prepared because I'm not gonna be by myself long because others will hear this story and they will hear every story that's coming behind it. So I, I just want people to take notice that things are happening to people that should not be happening because people are not doing their job.
Okay, all right. Uh, thank you for that. Thank you for that, that information, answering that question and then giving us a little bit more background there, so people can understand. Listen, let me do this. If you're just not joining us, this is round two of the DAG 2025 nominees interviews here on Mind, Body and Soul with Annette. We started last week and we're here this week. And of course, you see in my midst, author Black Diamond, author Shontavia Gill, and author Cassandra Hester. And so we're talking about, talking to them, you know, about their experiences, about their life and about their project. Let me move into asking you about your DAG, the DAG process, Distinguished Authors Guild process and your experience. And I heard some of you mentioned how you got into it, how you submitted your book. What, what did this experience do for you? And I know that there are various other foundations or organizations, you know, where your book can be recognized. But the Distinguished Authors Guild, what did this experience do for you? Let's start with Cassandra.
Well, I had heard of DAG last year, another fellow award winner. She had written a book and she had actually, you know, helped push me along the way. Shout out to Patricia Wallace in writing my book. And when I finished, you know, she kinda sent me the little link to like, you know, little, giving me a heads up, you need to submit this book. And so I decided, because I was actually really proud of accomplishing what I just accomplished, you know. It's no big undertaking or small undertaking to write a book. And so I said, well, I'll give it a try. And unbeknownst to me that my book was selected. So, I mean, it has been a wonderful experience. It has opened up a lot of networking, getting to know some of the other authors. And then also some of the avenues that they, and the experience and the skill sets they have, you know. But I wish I would have known these individuals prior, you know, with all of the skills that they have. But I will be taking that into the next book that I write and utilizing a lot of the individuals and the products or services that they offer. So it's been a great experience for me and I'm continuing to enjoy the ride. And I'm looking forward to, you know, what's next with even after the DAG stuff.
Beautiful. Thank you, thank you. Uh, Shontavia?
Hey, man. So for me, actually, I was at a, at an author summit last year and I was a vendor for my company, Yafa Shakur. I have a wellness consultation. Like I said, I make my own teas and herbs and medicines. And so I was there with my products and Gina Gadsden was actually one of the authors and she was one of the guest speakers. And for those who don't know who Gina Gadsden is, she is the CEO and one of the founders of the Distinguished Authors Guild organization. And so she, she and I talked briefly and I asked her to be a guest on my show. At the time, I still had my podcast, High Level Shape. She was one of the guests on the show. So after she was a guest on my show, she contacted me and told me more about DAG and asked if I could have some of her nominees and ambassadors on the show. And that's how it started. I began to meet more of the nominees, some of the ambassadors, got familiar with the family. We all grew a great bond for those that were on my show last year and the beginning of this year. And when she found out about my book, you know, because I didn't tell Gina I had the book. So I still wanna know how she found out about it. When she found out about it, she was like, you need to submit your book, submit your book, submit your book. I'm like, no, Gina, no, like, I didn't meet you for that. I'm just, this book was just for the community. I'm not trying to get recognition. I don't care about an award. This is to heal our people. This is to help our people. This is to do some of the things that, uh, author Black Diamond, again, my condolences and I thank you for being so vulnerable. Some of the things that she said, what she said, her husband, I'm so sorry that happened to you, was, you know, in the hospital for three weeks and telling us no fact. But that isn't the first 10th or 1,000th time I've heard that in my 16 years of the medical field. And so I just, I wrote the book not for a recognition, I wrote it for awareness. And I want people to be able to take care of themselves so they don't feel like they need to come to the hospital for small and minor things. So she somehow found out about the book and she pushed me to submit it and I did. And I'm just happy that I am one of the nominated authors this year. So far, my experience with DAG has been just of that. It's been a sisterhood, it's been great support, it's been love, it's been authenticity, it's been warmth. It's been ample opportunities that Gina has created for us to be able to be on other platforms such as this one. Annette, thank you again for opening up your platform to us. So she's given us a platform to be able to tell our stories. And so that's what DAG has done for me. It's created a lifelong sisterhood. For getting an award, I think I've gotten something greater in a lot of you beautiful women.
Yes, beautiful. Great explanation. And I feel the same way about the DAG community. I do.
Yes.
Beautiful, beautiful community to be a part of. Author Black, did you, were you connected with DAG through Dr. Stevens? I heard you mentioned her earlier.
I was connected through DAG with Farin Mclemore. She's the one that told me that I should join DAG. I met Dr. Stevens on, as a guest on my podcast, as many of the DAG nominees had been on my podcast. And that's how we pulled together the panel. But I can honestly say, and I'm not just saying it because you asked the question. I've been involved with many award shows, being nominated on many of them. And that's all it is. You get nominated and you hear about it later on. You hear when, when the show is, you hear about buying tickets. And that's, that's as much as you do. With this right here, my phone goes off a lot. Because it's always information that you're getting. And if it's not information really concerning DAG, it's the ambassadors. That they're bling, 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 you're hearing from them, they're telling you about things, they're asking you, you know, if they can support you in any ways. And then you're hearing from the nominees who are sharing information. Many of them are sharing that they've been on a certain show and that they're looking for people and, and things like that. You just hear so much. So they are more than an award show.
Yes.
You know, I, I would be looking forward to be televised, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it, if not the next, I'm looking at it at being better. And there's no shade against them than BET. I honestly think that it has that caliber to become there, you know. You, you look at some of our flyers and posters and stuff, you see the graphics that's been done with them. It's just, it's just so detailed. Everything has just been so detailed and spelled out in a way. Like, who wouldn't wanna be a, a part of DAG? You know, when I, when I say the word DAG, sometimes in my home, they say, there you go again, talking about this show. And I say, well, I'm not. And I say, well, I'm not, but yeah, DAG. So it's just been, it's been different for me than, than others. Like I said, I've, I've won other awards and I appreciate each and every other um program that's had uh awards and other platforms, but this is just a little bit different for me.
Yeah.
You know, I can get to, I can contact any one of the ambassadors and they will, they will respond. If they do not have the answer, I will get that answer, somehow they will get that answer back to me. So I just look at it as, it's not even an award show.
Yeah.
It's more like a gathering of, of family and we're meeting um like a family reunion. And if they give out awards, they give out awards, but it's more so just meeting your family that you hadn't seen in a while. Or you're going through their DNA and you find out you have these family members. That's what it is to me, that I found out I have all these nieces, nephews, cousins and extra brothers and sisters. And I ain't gonna say grandparents because I don't think anybody there is of that age. But um, and they better not say a grandparent with me either, so. I just feel as though that that's what DAG is to me, the Distinguished Authors Guild, that's what it means to me. And I give kudos to everybody that's um working on it, that's working behind the scene to make it so comfortable, convenient, relaxed and um family, that, that's what I deal with them and I'm just so impressed.
I love it, I love it, and I agree with each and every one of you, my goodness. Uh Gina, she, I understand about, you know, Gina kind of said, no, you better submit that book. I'm like, I wasn't even thinking about it, I'm, I feel the same way, Shantavia, I wasn't even thinking about any kind of recognition or anything like that. I was just writing a book because I was trying to be obedient to God after I kept telling them no. And, and getting it, you know, getting it out, but it, it, the bonus, you're right. Um, uh Black, author Black, the bonus is, is having, you know, this community, you know, this connection and this networking uh to build upon. And I, I think especially in our community, and I'm just gonna say this because we all black on here, you know, we need that.
Yes.
We need that, like, for sure, for sure. You know, and it, it, it's not like it, sometimes unfortunately it doesn't come easy because what they always say, barrels in the bucket, trying to pull each other down. But this is more uplifting and encouraging and I, I lo- I love every aspect of it. I love all those that work with it, you know, um and, and it, it's, it's just a tremendous blessing, it really is. Um, so I know we're gonna be wrapping up, but I do want you guys to tell everybody where you can find these wonderful uh projects that have been nominated for this uh, this year. Uh, where can they find your books?
You can find my book, Sixteen Secrets to Self-Acclarization, on my website, that is W W W dot Y A F as in Frank A S H A K O O R dot com, that's yafashakor.com. I also do wellness conversations, so if you have a disease process or illness that you would like to discuss with me, I do take consultations for that as well. You could also reach out to me via social media on TikTok, Facebook and Instagram and YouTube at Higher Levels with Shay dot com. I mean, I'm sorry, Higher Levels with Shay, that's S H A Y. And you can also hear me speak about medical moments, business bonus and ministry minutes right there on uh Mondays at ten AM on Rejoice one oh two point three.
Alright, love it, wait a minute. How long you been doing that?
Well, one oh two point three.
You want to come on the show? I mean. No, I'm sorry, I asked that because I'm trying to, I, I think I remember hearing.
I would love to have you, y'all had Shayna on there, I had Gina Gasson on there, um I had a boxer on there, a sixteen and O boxer on there. I don't know which show you've heard, but yeah, I would love to have you on, I would love to have all of you all on the show, actually, to be on the radio.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to connect the name with it, I, I, for some reason, I think I may have heard it, I, I mean.
Yes.
Okay, alright, well, good.
It's a national show and nationally streaming, it's regional, it's, it's, it's a big show, it's a huge show in the Midwest. So for those not familiar with the Midwest, it's, it's a huge show, it goes na- nationwide, so it's a huge gospel station.
Yes, yeah, yep, I know one oh two point three, I'm here in the Midwest too, so. Um, author Black Diamond, where can they find your book?
You can find my book on Basic Black, B A S I C. B A S I C, Black, B L A Q U E dot com, that's my website, you can find it on there. You can also go to The Crew Network, um that's part of my um podcast, Basic Black After Dark. We're also on YouTube, so you can go through that, you'll find information there. Um, any of the contacts, any of the people that I've mentioned, they know me. Um, I'm also with a program called Be Mogul, I have a shop on there that you can find me on Be Mogul. I also do candles, I make my own bedroom candles, um and I always often tell them that you're gonna be twenty-one and over to buy the candles. And I also suggest you have to be over twenty-one to read the habitual liar because it's some of the language that's in there. So and I often look at people and I don't want to card anybody, I try to take them, you know, at face value as far as how old they are to, to get that book. Um, even though eighteen, you're an adult, but I don't think you're adult enough to read that book. So um that's one of the things, I'm also the Renaissance Coach, so I'll be putting that up. So I have a lot of projects that's gonna be coming up and you'll be able to find me and follow me. But for most of the, the projects that I'm working on, you'll be able to find me on Basic Black After Dark. You'll be able to see things on that and I'm gonna also be on Roku. Um, I'll have my own channel on there under um Access Granted and that's also an affiliate of V H C, which is Dr. Steph uh Carolyn Stevens. So yeah, I'm just, you, just anybody that you know that knows me, you can just ask them and they'll get it.
Okay, alright, now I'm gonna ask all three of you, before I move to uh Cassandra, to make sure, on this particular live, can you uh make sure you put your links, you know, in the comment section so that those who will come back and watch it, they'll be able to click on your link and, and, and get your book. Because we want to make sure we, we push that out as well. Um, Cassandra, where can we find your book?
Well, let me say first, even though I'm in North Carolina, I was in Chicago for fifteen years, so I do know one oh two point three gospel station. That was one of the best stations I've listened to in a while. Um, but yeah, my book, you can find it on bookbaby.com and um you can just Google Sedonia Rowland and it will also appear various other locations where you can um find the book. Um, like I said earlier, my platform, I am looking to um sprout out on that, is talking and discussing abuse in the church. That is just a, this conversation that is silent and I think it needs to be heard at this point because of a lot of the um, people that experience that, but you never know what they're experiencing because they allow the purpose to trump the pain. And we want to continue moving forward in that direction, so.
You just said something there.
Yeah.
I caught that, yeah, that's good, that's good stuff right there. Alright, thank you for sharing that, and please again, ladies, make sure in the comment section of this particular live feed on Facebook that you make sure you put your links there so that individuals can go directly to it. This has been tremendous, I appreciate each and every one of you for your time. I know, you know, where you're going on this, this, this media journey um leading up to the Distinguished Authors Guild uh award show. You know, can be, you can have interviews here, interviews there, but you know, it's all for a purpose. So I thank you for taking the time out to come here on Mind, Body and Soul and getting caught in the net and sharing your information, your story uh with us. So I want to encourage each of you that are watching, I'm gonna go back up here so I can make sure that my link is here. I was trying to do, I don't know, Gina may not be able to watch right now, but the link, you can still go to Eventbrite. Distinguished Authors Guild Sixth Annual Literary Award Show. That will take place on November seventh, two thousand twenty-five. So you have a little bit of time before the actual event, but we want to encourage you to go ahead and get your tickets if you haven't done so already. So the link is there, um and if you don't go to this link and you're trying to make sure that you get your ticket, you can always go to Eventbrite. And I believe Gina says the key word will be Distinguished Authors Guild, so you can check that out. Many of you have that app on your phone, Eventbrite, so go ahead, get your tickets today, do not miss out on it. Um, you, you've heard these uh young ladies, my queens here, talking on today about their experiences. But then even the, the event itself is, it, it, it's one that you need to experience. Uh, trust me, you do, it's beautiful, even if you're not an author, even if you're not nominated, please make sure you uh purchase your ticket. And my understanding again is that the proceeds from the tickets will go towards scholarships. And I, I love the mentality that Gina has with this and making sure that this is uh, you know, advantageous for our, our young people and those who are uh being educated. So uh this is great, I do want to real quick just recognize some of you that did come in, some of you made comments, many of you came and I couldn't see your um, your name. But I thank you Farin, author Farin, I believe you're coming up soon um here on Mind, Body and Soul, might be next week for you. So thanks for joining us, um and she did say she's sending out prayers to you, author Black, um and her love as well. Um, let's see here, trying to scroll, Jerry Rowland, we appreciate you for coming in and your comments, um interacting with us on this afternoon. And Zelda, I believe, amazing show ladies, continue to work, uh excuse me, walk in God's will. And Jerry Rowland did say a great show. So um thank you all uh for coming in, engaging with us, uh sticking with us, listening and supporting these uh authors on this afternoon. So we're gonna wrap up, but I need you guys to meet me back here tonight, those of you that are watching, meet me at six PM Central Standard Time. I'm gonna have another group on this evening, uh we're to be featuring author Sher- Cherise Bennett, Shanita Bolton, Natasha Cook and Brittany Thomas. Those should be my guests on this evening uh at six PM Central Standard Time. So make sure you guys come back, there are more Distinguished Author Guild nominees for you to listen to and uh put your support behind. Uh, ladies again, thank you, I appreciate you and I pray that God's best will be yours and uh he will continue to strengthen each and every one of you. So until this evening, I'll give you guys time to.